Okay, so I'd like to reconvene the public session of the school board meeting. Welcome back from break, everybody. Hope everyone had a good break. And Dr. Monasano, your...
Amazing.
Oh, excuse me, wait, we have to approve the minutes.
Mm-hmm.
So hopefully everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting that had been circulated. Does anybody have any questions or comments or corrections to that? We would need a motion to approve the minutes in a second.
Move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion or commentary? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome back to everybody. Hope everybody had a good break. It's nice to get away for a few days anyway. So things have been relatively quiet since we got back. It's only been two days. But we've been working on a number of things related to the Capitol project. You'll hear more about from Dan later on tonight. We had some students perform at Carnegie Hall last Saturday. Did have an opportunity to speak with Pam Simpson today. We dropped off a nice program from Carnegie Hall with our students. And she said it was just a tremendous, tremendous experience for our kids. So congratulations to her and her kids. I'm happy they had that experience. It's wonderful. Tonight, as part of the report, you're going to hear from Dr. Kecky, who's going to talk a little bit about the Tri-State's pre-consultancy that we had recently in preparation for the site visit that we're scheduled to have in October. We had a pretty full day and a half, almost two days, with our visiting team. As you'll hear from Mara, they did come away fairly impressed with the type of work that we're doing here. And I don't want to steal her thunder, so I'm going to ask her to come on up and talk to the board a little bit about the site visit that we had.
Good evening. On February 6th and 7th, the district engaged in a planning consultancy with the Tri-State Consortium, a dynamic learning organization of public schools that values systems thinking as the foundation for continuous improvement. The purpose of the visit was to assist the district in planning for the full visit to take place in October. Members of the 13-member visiting team included Dr. Martin Brooks, Executive Director of the Tri-State Consortium, Dr. Mike McGill, Retired Superintendent of Scarsdale Public Schools, and Dr. Lauren Allen, Retired Superintendent of the Ardsley Union Free School District. The focus of the planning consultancy centered around the assessment of the Bronxville Promise and included a general guiding question of how do we know our students are growing in the dispositions of the promise? The last Tri-State's visit in April of 2016 focused on the development of the shared vision of the Bronxville Promise, which was in its infancy, and highlighted some of the instructional strategies identified as promising in terms of developing our students to lead, to think critically, to engage the world, and to innovate. Since 2016, we have expanded our students' access to authentic learning experiences that align with the dispositions. These experiences include project-based learning through a partnership with the Buck Institute, developing a love of reading and writing through Authentic Literacy Work with Teachers College Reading and Writing Project, and creating structures that support students' ability to think critically about their own learning through innovative designs and education. We have also explored factors related to student stress through partnerships with Challenge Success and Mastery Transcript Consortium. The visiting team was very impressed and commented that the district is doing important, leading-edge work and posed interesting questions for itself and for the field. Those questions and the search for answers have significant implications for public education in America. To say that the visit team was impressed would be to significantly underestimate our reaction. During the two-day visit, teachers and students presented on performance tasks that focused on innovation, engaged citizenship, leadership, and critical thinking. Examples included designing optimal chairs for classrooms, coding math apps, creating social commentary through media and literature, classroom routines where students reflect on errors in mathematics in order to solidify their understanding, and analysis of satire in literature using the Approval Matrix from New York Magazine with its infamous highbrow, lowbrow, despicable, and brilliant quadrant ratings. They also heard more about our plans to expand the senior portfolios from Ys to grades five and eight. In terms of feedback for moving forward and preparing for October's visit, the visiting team advises us to continue to question if the district is assessing for what it values, the dispositions of the Bronxville Promise, and to engage the faculty in discussions to identify evidence related to the Bronxville Promise and how to best capture the evidence to demonstrate student growth. One thought was to transition the performance tasks alive and well across the district into performance assessments through the creation of aligned rubrics based on the indicators and outcomes identified by the faculty. Additionally, the visiting team questioned whether the district is more interested in learning about individual student growth or systemic growth, and to reflect on the portfolio development process through that lens. Further, the visiting team cautioned that as the roots of the promise deepen, the work will inevitably bump up against existing norms and structures such as transcripts and schedules. The team encouraged us to continue to pursue relationships with Mastery Transcript Consortium and others interested in transformative practice, and to continue our proactive discussions with the board in identifying and anticipating pushback. They expressed an ongoing need to narrate the connectedness between some of the professional development, including the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project, innovative designs in education, and the project-based learning work, to help faculty see how the dots connect and to anticipate tension between teacher autonomy and consistency of practice which occurs in every district. Dr. Brooks shared, "There has been a noticeable shift in faculty understanding and support for the Bronxville Promise since the last visit. The vision's roots have deepened, and it is clear that many staff members have incorporated elements of the vision into their work. The teachers with whom we met were able to talk not just about how they have implemented the promise in their work, but also about the why. Described as a little place doing big things, we were encouraged by the team to continue to move the work forward. The written feedback from the planning visit is currently in draft form, and once finalized will be shared with the board in its entirety." A special thank you goes to all faculty who participated in planning the visit, including Denise Flood, Robert Cross, Jean Orsenago, Dana Landisman, Bill Meyer, Veronica Fiori, Justin Chow, Kathy Marin, Carol Ann Del Judas, Claire Holakoo, Brad Ashley, Ben Cornish, Courtney Allen, Rachel Sugarman, Brittany Brea, Lori Feingold, Nina Blouner, Megan Figaroa, and Jean Windells. Additionally, many thanks goes to the administrative leadership team for their help in planning and coordinating the visit and supporting the Bronxville Promise in the next phase of development.
If I can just add, I want to express my appreciation to Mara. She really worked very hard in putting all the pre-visitation together, arranging all the presentations, the schedules, and really was the driving force behind our advancement of the promise and all the things that we're doing to try to stay on that cutting edge of where we are and where we're going. And she really did an outstanding job, so I do appreciate the work that you've done, and I look forward to the work you're continuing to do as we get ready for the real visit in October. But they left us with some very important questions and a lot of things to think about as we continue our work in deepening the dispositions and really what it means for our kids and how we're going to measure our student growth in the four dispositions as well. But after being here and listening to that, and it was a proud moment, I think, for all of us to be part of that in this particular visit, and then going out recently to a national superintendent's conference, I can tell you that the work that we're doing here is trying to be emulated in many other places, but I think we're doing it the best that I've seen so far. So congratulations, Mara. Thank you.
Just a quick, Mara?
Mara, questions?
Questions.
Not off yet.
So it's fantastic to hear that the roots are sort of deepening on the promise because it's five years in maybe now. It's more than three. I've been here for four, five years.
Five, since the initial conversations, yes.
So that's good to hear. In terms of students, do we have a way of measuring the impact to students or student outcomes, or like what a senior today versus a senior three years ago or five years ago, like what the impact on their life and their education change has been?
You know, it's difficult to assess for these things, which is why we asked the Tri-State's Committee to help us think about how do you know if kids are growing in these areas? They are not often easily captured in quantitative measures. We feel that the portfolio, which students will do in now fifth, eighth, and senior year, could provide some sort of connecting the dots for individual students to think about how they presented in these areas as fifth graders, how that changed and adapted by eighth grade, and how that changed and adapted by the time they're ready to leave us. We have other methods, such as we're going to be surveying seniors as seniors, and then I think five, 18 months out.
Five years out.
Five years out, which is being coordinated through our high school and our guidance department, so we can get some longitudinal data such as that. So it will definitely be a combination of quantitative measures, surveys, and individual growth stories that tell the story over time. And at least from my perspective at this point, it's important to look at all of those as evidence. But I think what makes me most proud is that we have mobilized these words into things that kids do and curriculum, and now we have sort of the starting point for collecting the information over time for them to explore how they've grown in these areas. And to me, one of the things that stuck out was the individual stories are the best way to tell how our students are experiencing the growth in these areas.
And we did have students present, by the way. And that was...
Oh, you did?
Yeah, that was really terrific. It was really, you'd be really very proud of our students who were there, how well they talked about the promise and what it's meant to them and how they felt they've grown in the promise. And the other thing that's stuck with me at the end of the visit was something that Marty Brooks said, and that is, you know, that we should be thinking about the difference between and how we're going to collect data versus collecting evidence, which is a really interesting question to me, and what the differences might be and how we're going about doing that. So we're going to struggle with that one a little bit.
In October, they will see some of the students present portfolios. We're going to record many of the seniors, and they can see fifth and eighth graders as sixth and ninth graders. So we expect them to give us some pointed feedback once they see that type of work. And then they had other suggestions about maybe sort of standardizing rubrics based on the indicators and outcomes we have, which we haven't, you know, decided upon yet, but that was one way they could, they suggested you could quantify it if necessary.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thanks. The only thing on my area is the calendar, the second review of the calendar for you to consider.
No changes.
No changes. So there's a resolution asking you to approve the calendar for next school year.
Can we get a motion for the approval of the next year's calendar?
So moved.
Any second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
Aye.
Dr. Kelly.
Good evening, everybody. Relatively short personnel agenda this evening. I do want to start off by congratulating Pam Kohlhoff on her decision to resign for the purpose of retirement. Over her 23 years here, she has really touched so many students' lives, and we're deeply grateful for her expertise and what a tremendous colleague and friend she's been. So I have before you a resolution to approve her resignation.
Great. Now, you want to do this one individually? Okay. Can we get a motion to approve the resignation and retirement of Pam Kohlhoff?
Move.
Second. Any discussion? I would just like, let the record show that I think we all agree with what you said, and some of us have been fortunate to have kids go through her classroom, and it's been a real treat. So big shoes to fill.
Great.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be missed.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Thank you. The remainder of the resolutions involve the continuous regular substitute appointment in middle school science, as well as an appointment of a substitute teacher and a substitute teacher aide. In addition, there is a side letter agreement between the district and the Bronxville Teachers Association, as was reviewed in executive session, and then some revisions to our high school play, our winter coaches roster, as well as a new ANA and Chartwell's employee. So those would be resolutions B through J.
Great. Can I get a motion to approve resolutions B through J?
So moved.
Second, anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan.
I'll begin by talking about the current year's budget while Connie's going to get a few slides related to next year's budget ready. As expected, my projected surplus is eking up a little bit as we get towards the end of the year. Split roughly evenly between expenditures and revenues, now projecting about $360,000, hopefully with a goal of getting close enough that to our $500,000 allocation of appropriated fund balance to offset the 2019, 2020 tax levy without reducing reserves. So if we can get there, we'll be very happy, but I think we'll get close, if not all the way there.
And if anyone can read that on the screen, I'm...
Good luck.
Be a sniper.
You can't?
And then, last time we all met together was on a Saturday morning before the break. We talked about the budget for next year. We're in the throes of our budget process. If you can go to the next slide, Connie, you know, we're actually towards the end. We're getting to the point where the board's getting close to adopting it at the next board meeting, hopefully. So here's what shook out after the last Saturday morning meeting. If you can go to the next slide, please, Connie. Just keep hitting until the whole thing shows, yeah. Okay. To reiterate, our budget is about $334,000 under the cap at this point, with an estimated tax levy increase of about 2.64 percent. And although some changes were made to the budget, nothing was made, no changes were made to the bottom line for decreases. If you can go to the next page, Connie. We saw some reductions in salaries and benefits of about $378,000. But what this current budget number two is showing is an increase in building improvements of $378,000 as we are going to suggest addressing PA system upgrades. That was one of the things in, you know, our self-critique on security that was woefully lacking, was clock and PA systems. And we're looking at a few right now, and these were preliminary estimates in that range.
I think we also talked about coordinating with land and the construction activity to make sure that we don't rip out walls twice, right?
Exactly.
They've already been plugged into that.
Okay.
Yep. So every, all budget pieces are certainties at this point, with the one minor one being state aid. And final state aid numbers usually don't impact us that much. So, you know, this is, I'd be willing to say that this is, everything in this budget, you know, is certain at this point. You know, the board obviously can, you know, elected to do with it what they want, but this is the budget we're recommending at this point. If you want, go to the next slide, Connie. And this is what it looks like. The main drivers, you know, we went through 1.66 percent, which is well over half of the budget increase, is a few new programs and the facilities that I was, the facilities augmentation that I was just referring to with the PA system. Other than that, due to the retirement incentive, personnel is relatively flat. Obviously contractual is up significantly because of the PA system. BOSI's is up because of the security consultant that we're hoping to get on board. And then benefits are up primarily due to the retirement incentive. It's a one-time hit for the payouts.
Hey, Dan, one question on the revenue side. And Westchester County's talking about a 1 percent sales increase, and some of that comes to the school district, but I couldn't figure out how much would actually impact us.
We get about 380,000 bucks annually.
But I don't know what the current county tax and how that...
Boy, a 1 percent increase in the sales tax would be, that's got to be like a 15 or 20 percent increase in the overall sales tax. I'm not sure what the county share is in Westchester, but just say it's half, because the state has a share also.
Right. I think it's...
So if they're increasing their sales tax...
Percent to four, let's say three to four percent.
Yeah, so if they're increasing it by 1 percent, I mean, it's a 30 percent increase in their share.
And then we get part of that as a school district, right?
Yeah, I don't know how much would trickle down to us from that kind of increase.
You probably should look at that, because my guess is that passes at the state level, because you're talking about the state level. Not that it's probably going to impact this budget, but just as you think about going forward.
Sure.
So this is just, at this point, just informational?
Yep.
Okay. We would expect to vote, we would expect to have the board at the next board meeting?
Yes.
And then go through the public notification process prior to the...
Yep. Then the next thing after that would be a public hearing in May, early May, with a vote in, was it, third Tuesday in May? Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
And next, I do have some financial action items. There are two. In this budget, it maintains our current level of funding for our, for our leased technology from Putnam Westchester BOSI's. That's financial action item number one. Our installment purchase agreement, about $75,000 a year is the current level. We have settled on to sustain a four-year hardware replacement cycle while continuously upgrading maintenance of the infrastructure. This does not include labor, project management fees, and imaging costs, which are already in our BOSI's budget in the technology area. And I picked out a few highlights in my memo. Laptops and desktops, we're looking at about 61. We have, we're replacing outdated projectors and smart boards with newer technology, you know, interactive projectors and interactive televisions. There's a few printers. And there's some infrastructure updates as far as switches go. And there's classroom technology as well, Chromebooks and mini iPads. I don't know, Jen, if you have any comments, but we'd like to get this approved at this meeting. It's subject to the funding of the budget, so if the budget goes down, we do not have to do this.
So just so I understand this, Dan, so this equipment we buy and it's in place for the school year starting in September?
Yes.
All of it. So in this budget, in here, they have a procurement fee of 4 percent. I understand that. That's for them to go out and buy. But then underneath that, I read the fine print, it says they're going to charge us 3 percent a year after that for procurement. Why would they charge us again after they buy the equipment?
It's just an annual. It's not on...
Well, it's not...
One order, get anything. So we go to now, it has to accrue to BOSI, it's going out to the state, and then we cut all the permits, everything comes July 1. Have to spend the summer installing again, if you're ready. So there's that one, the 4 percent.
Yeah.
And then we don't have to do it again until following year.
When you have new purchases in the second year?
Yes, it's an annual. I think it's annual.
So we are, we are not going to purchase $300,000 worth of equipment?
This, yes.
We are.
Yes.
Is there an anticipated expense the following year?
Just the lease payments.
Yeah, it's the same. It's what we did last summer, so it's the same for this summer. It's on a replacement cycle to replace teacher machines, classroom machines. This is the third year to replace all the smart boards, the fine boards, replace smart boards, and then some of the infrastructure bases. And our Chromebooks are already at five years from replacing a big chunk of those, too.
And the primary reason we go through BOSI's, there's two reasons. A, if it floods, they're the ones who have to deal with it, because it's their equipment until the lease is paid up. And B, is that we get aid on it.
So, Michael, is your question, you're acknowledging we're paying the 4 percent this year.
Right. That makes sense to me.
Right. And your question is, are we going to pay 3 percent on the $2.99?
3 percent on top of the...
Every year. Every year. That's the question.
The way I read this is...
The way that it's written. It's unclear.
I'll get it clarified.
It's on page three of, I just don't, 4 percent I'm fine with.
Yeah, that makes no sense. Keep paying for procurement when we, it's already procured.
Unless they're saying that next year, whatever we buy new, will be at 3 percent, which is lovely, but why would you have that in this contract?
Are we buying or leasing?
That's what I thought we were.
That's why it makes no sense.
Right. So is that for, in year two, we are leasing new things, and that comes with...
It's not clear. That's his question.
Okay. I think it's a reasonable question.
It is a reasonable one. Agreed.
The second financial action item is a foundation donation. The foundation is kicking in another $8,750 for technical support related to the very large donation of a television studio. I guess it's... For, I guess it's, uh, it's continuing, um, training and, uh, on how to use, uh, the technology. So, you know, thanks. We say at every meeting, but thank you very much to the foundation.
That's an awesome facility, by the way.
Uh, just on the first one, you said it, we'd like to approve it tonight, except that it's subject to the budget being approved.
Yes.
Which is obviously more than two months away.
Yes.
So, what, what is the benefit of approving? We have a question about it. What's the benefit of approving it tonight versus at the, in, in, you know, three or four weeks?
The benefit is to approve it, to get it to BOSI's, and it goes when their budget's got approved, then go up to the state.
And it goes to the state.
It's a process, so the earlier we approve it, the quicker it gets.
Gets it in the pipeline.
Isn't it a delay in the orders? You delay the orders, it delays the delivery, which delays the installation or only the school.
Yeah, I would ask the board to approve it and we'll definitely, we'll, we'll get you the answer to that question.
Because it's tentative approval anyway, right?
Yeah.
So, I move we approve it, noting that it's tentative and certainly.
Well, it's, it's approval, it's approval as far as we're concerned and then if the public votes yes on our budget, then it's.
That's true.
But if they come back and they say, well, we found out and it is indeed 3 percent a year, whether you like it or not, uh, we would have the ability to say, I move that we don't, that we withdraw the approval. Wouldn't we be able to do that?
It's getting signed tonight.
It's getting signed tonight.
But then I think you cross out that language.
Jen, do you know, do you think if the board waited to approve it in March, does that give us enough time still to get it to BOSI's for, for their budget?
I think that's the, the last.
Cut off, so if you want to, uh, hold off until the March board meeting, it's up to you.
It's, it's not unusual to do a subject to, like, you know, get, if, if you get 3 percent out, go ahead and go. So, is, I'd be comfortable with that.
Or a satisfactory explanation as to what it is.
Yeah.
What it is there for.
That's okay. Do that.
So, it doesn't have.
Okay, so we, we, I guess we just need to modify this motion a little bit to say, subject to clarification of the fees involved.
Procurement fees.
The procurement fees.
The procurement fees.
In, out years.
We would like to approve a motion to, I can't read that, so.
[laughing]
Um, the installment purchase agreement. So, can we get a motion for that?
Whatever you say.
Seconds, anybody?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, that's getting signed tonight as is?
No.
Subject to.
Subject to.
It can be signed, it can be signed once we have clarification.
So, it's not getting signed?
Doesn't have to be signed tonight, but it could be signed.
Yeah, no, we can sign it.
Two days from now.
Yeah.
Or whatever. Right, doesn't have to wait till March 21st or whenever the next. All right, the second resolution's a little bit easier. Um, can we get a motion to approve the acceptance of the grant?
Move that we accept the money.
Give a second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, School Foundation.
Moving on to facilities, we have a lot going on. Um, we checked on, uh, early this week after break, we checked on the status of our pumps. Their, uh, the, the pieces are being collected out in Bakersfield, California, and we're still on schedule for an April delivery with, uh, an April slash May installation. Um, stormwater, uh, our plan for alleviating stormwater pressure on, uh, on the Meadow Avenue side of the building is being finalized, uh, for inclusion into the, uh, you know, the construction this summer, hopefully. Uh, connecting Meadow Avenue drainage to the pump system. Uh, it's gonna be designed by LAN and approved by both, uh, Folchetti and our other consultant, Petroselli Engineering. Uh, Chambers Field, uh, steady progress is being made, replacing, uh, the drainage and finalizing both, uh, the field and the track designs. The turf has been ordered and should arrive in a month or so. Uh, demolition and disposal of the field should happen during that time, over the next three or four weeks. Uh, we're trying to put as much pressure as we can to speed the, speed up the process, but, uh, I think we're probably looking at Memorial Day completion at the earliest. Well, the budget documents said June, we're hoping earlier, but, uh, um, you know, just can't seem to get them to move faster. And then the library and, uh, large bond project, um, both bids are being advertised tomorrow with walkthrough scheduled for, uh, early March and a bid opening scheduled in late March. And we're certainly looking forward to that. I think where those bids and the contractors we get, uh, will tell us a lot about how much financial pressure will be placed on the project and if anything has to be value engineered.
Or if alternatives can fit in.
Or, or if the bids come in lower. I mean, we've already had favorable bids on the, uh, ceiling work that was done, um, and the, uh, and the field. So, you know, pumps came in right up, right around where they were budgeted, so maybe we'll have a favorable response as far as the, uh, as the overall, uh, bid goes.
I'm sorry, Dan, when did you say we would have that conversation? April? We'd have that conversation in April?
Uh, I don't know if we'll be ready to award bids at the April board meeting, uh, but if we can, we will.
Okay.
Um, and if, if we can't.
Yes, if not, we'll probably have to have a special.
A special meeting.
To approve them. Because I don't, we'd rather not wait.
Our plan is to award them, but if, if we get contractors we don't know and have to vet them, it, it may take longer.
Fair enough.
But the idea is to have actually construction take place this summer.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Is there an official date where the bids are due?
Yes, uh, it's the end of March, I don't know the exact date offhand.
The 23rd, maybe?
Twenty, yeah, some.
I think it's 23rd.
It's the last week in March.
Seven, 23rd. It's 23rd.
Okay. I do have a couple of action items, or one action item, change orders related to the playroom ceiling project. Before the break, I alerted the board to, uh, a couple of conditions that were discovered that required, um, that were gonna require change orders. Uh, they've been, um, both vetted and approved by both LAN, our architect, and Savin, our construction manager. So, I'd asked the board to approve, uh, $14,034.37 worth of change orders, which will conclude this project. And, uh, it, it comes out about $20,000 under the original budget, even with these change orders.
Good job. Can we get a motion to approve the change order resolution?
Move.
Any second?
Chairman?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
So.
John?
Yes?
Um, I just wanted to note publicly for the record that there was discussion, um, which was the result of it having been raised by, um, a couple of the coaches for vars- a couple of the varsity coaches, the prospect of, uh, exploring alternate use, uh, alternate, uh, facilities, uh, off-site, like Tibbetts Field, as well as potentially exploring the use of temporary lighting for Hayes Field to enable, uh, certain teams to be able to practice after dark, at least in the early spring, uh, because Hayes Field is really gonna be overtaxed, um, by the athletic programs and, and Roy had actually said that he was going to discuss that with the athletic director.
Next up, I think, is policy review, right?
Yes, as you know, we've been re- reviewing the policies and, uh, the ones that are up for first reading are all required policies that have been updated. Um, I don't think there's anything significantly changed in any of these, uh, policies, um, but it's just keeping us up to date with, uh, current regulations and, and laws. Uh, so we have, uh, some policies up for a first reading and then we have two, uh, policies that'll be rescinded, that aren't necessarily law, and one, the other one happens to be in the, uh, other policy, so we don't need them any longer.
Okay, so we have two, we have two resolutions. The first is to approve the first reading, which we'll then do again in a month.
Yep.
Okay. So, um, can I get a motion to approve the first reading of the four policies that are listed here?
So moved.
Any seconds?
Second.
Any discussion, commentary? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are these dramatic readings?
If you'd like them to be.
They're taking place in the TV studio with the, um, the new cameras.
We can do a pretty mean code of ethics for you if you'd like.
I, you know, I, I think it would be riveting.
The second resolution is to rescind, and this is a one-time only, we're not gonna do a double. Okay, great. Um, can I get a motion to approve the resolution to rescind policies 5155 and 5160?
Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Um, committee reports, I don't think we've had, besides we had that, we had the, um, budget review meeting, uh, with the board and, and the staff a couple of weeks ago, that was very productive, thanks for the time there, and otherwise, I don't think there are any committee reports. Action calendar is a meeting in a month.
Right. Remind, we just, we did, uh, we do not have a meeting this Saturday.
Yeah, we can't, we canceled the Saturday meeting.
Oh.
Um, okay, public hearing. Dr. Katz.
Your fan club.
Good evening. My name is Dr. David Katz, I'm a, uh, middle school social studies teacher, teaching seventh and eighth grade here in Bronxville Middle School, and also for now, the, uh, president of the Bronxville Teachers' Association. I rise to extend my congratulations as well to Pam Kohlhoff on behalf of her union for her 23 years as professional educator here in Bronxville. She's made an immense difference in the lives of her colleagues, as well as the lives of students. I say for now because this is, uh, I would say bittersweet, but not really.
[laughing]
Just bitter.
The, uh, the last time I rise, uh, in front of this board in my role as president of the Bronxville Teachers' Association, a role that I've served for 11 years now and have taken great pride in the work that the Teachers' Association has done over the last 11 years through some difficult economic and political times to work with, um, this, this board and its predecessors, with this administration and its predecessors, to get, to work together in a respectful and, um, meaningful way for the community, for our teachers, for our students, and we've, we've done some good work. Take tremendous pride every day that I've been president to the Teachers' Association to represent the finest professionals in this business. I thank you for your time.
Well, you don't get off that easy.
I know.
If I, if I. John, I would like to, I would like to recognize, uh, Dr. Katz's contribution in my experience as a member of this board, uh, for the collaborative way the Teachers' Union has, the Teachers' Association has worked with, uh, the board, uh, and again, noting, you know, that, uh, it's not always easy, but it's always professional and respectful, and I always appreciated that. He notes that he, uh, took great pride in representing the finest teachers, and I just wanna note that in my view, he did it in the finest way.
Thank you. And, and Dr. Katz, I, I believe your term doesn't end till the end of March, so you're welcome to come back to our, our next meeting.
The March meeting, I'll be in, in Washington DC with the eighth graders. Uh, yeah.
We could dial you in if you'd like.
[laughing]
We could have a special public session.
Yeah, you might like that break.
No, thank you very much for your, for your time and dedication, and it certainly extends beyond the tenure of this board, so on behalf of previous boards, thank you. So, anybody else from the public? Great. Motion to adjourn the meeting. Anybody?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thanks.
That's a record.
There you go.